You don't even listen to that in here.
No, I just...
You mean, I'm not...
I said you read it. I had already, you know, I don't understand what you're talking about. You just... Well, I didn't read it coming around. We... So I said, if I buy one of these, or if I take a third of them, well, that's what the... That's all I know. I didn't know if I did not read it. But such a... But this was just saying that you read it, right? Okay. The talk says that you read that. But honestly, I can tell you, certainly you must agree that they're going to be able to do it. Then initial sign, and right sign that are... (Music)
We're ready now. We got it. We got it. We're gonna break it, working everything out there. She don't agree with that.
Okay. Um... What do we have? Well, I think we need to talk about the arguments. They have questions about it before we go through the... Do they understand what they are? Or...
We haven't seen your order to come in, uh...
And I think I had a charge that had out, so I got that, and I don't have it now.
And like, eight nine three.
I got that out, but I don't know. What is for... The time of the sheriff's department. Because I know they're talking about it. Yeah, the first one is for the... Building on eight nine three that three dollars is the charge for the right phone data, like, under the law. And it tells you in the body that's exactly what it's for. It's for the sheriff, the current, uh... The city, that we have to buy one, we have to collect this money. Because, uh, letter I got from these two courts in Missouri, second effective, now, this is 2018, 2014, the law to read municipal courts are to assess three dollars share of the common fund charge as part of costs. If you have any questions about that, we'll go to the eight nine four, which is, uh... This is the statute of secret disclosure potential content that enters the, uh... Since our budget is going to be over a million dollars this year, if we don't act this arguments here, every member of the board, every city official has to fill out a long financial report. If you adopt this arguments, here, only two people that have to do it is seniors and directors. We'll still have to do it, but everybody else won't. Why? I don't know. But that's what I was totally fighting for this area. So, something more that they want to adopt here. And then first along the budget. Questions now, sometimes asked about budget.
Uh, will you play your part?
Yeah, eight nine five. Now, on the, on the budget, on the budget, um, yeah, this is the first time I've been working on the budget. Okay. Um, we, we have, according to the... Here, we're gonna have a work session on the budget, so we're working right now.
They say the work session.
This is the work session now, that we're talking about, this one that we have to amend tonight, or amend in September. We're gonna have to amend it before September 31st, or 30th, whatever, so that where it defines the state statute, we have to have a balanced budget. All the pluses I have here, for office increases, that's money that we've already spent, or are going to spend until the end of the year, I hope. At the end of September, I'm going to have another adjustment. If I increase it, that means that we won't be using any more money for that line. I'd like, for instance, I would deal insurance. We already paid for the year agreement, maybe I have, like, a year, 456 dollars came in at 371, so I subtracted 50 dollars out. So that the new budget is pretty close by now to what we have spent or will spend until the end of September. This is not the budget for next year, this is just this year's. I have a budget I'm working on for next year.
And that's, and that's the one that we, we participate in with the work...
Yes, we...
That's me, not tonight.
That don't need you set up. Yeah, that's gonna be locked down, okay. If you have anything in this one...
So, does, by, by saying that, that we are saying that, do you agree, or you say yourself, that I'm agreeing that everything on here, I understand, and...
Well, it's okay, yeah. I mean, I, I tried to make it as simple as I could. Where the budget that we adopted in March is the one that said budget in March, and then we have two more lines, either increase or decrease. The laws, what we bring it up, to what this here arguments says. So this is what was done this year before I even took, took office, or basically, right? So now, is that what I'm running for next year? Okay.
You already can be...
Can we discuss anything in today's... I have a question.
Sure.
Okay. Along with the sign right here, because I saw that we have, that we're gonna be talking about, the blow off sign.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was, that was damaged in accident, correct? Was that what that 750 dollars is, in the...
We passed, we placed it in the...
Yeah.
That's what we got from the insurance company. Okay, so that's what we allotted to fix that sign. So, and that's gonna be discussed, see? If we come in for 750, okay, we don't, then we have to go back next month. For some personal money, we have to add. Have to adjust it.
And, um, do we have... No, if we haven't, when we put in our new, uh... When we got a new book, we have good ordinance, do we have that evidence already, or is he still rotating? Well, is, do we have, do we have this, all salaries in the main decisions, or if I were to...
No, because he has not been putting his office together. He's only temporary. I mean, he don't, he's been, uh, trying to renew. We have pass of arms adopted this year to cover that. We don't have any staying for the rest of the salaries, but I can use that word now. Is that a bed name that actually come up? I remember in practice, seven nine or something, I don't know, I don't find it. Or... Wasn't quite that cheap. But that's one of the things when you look to, uh, when you work on the budget. How, how size of your backlog, when you work on the budget, you have to decide which salaries will be... No, if anything, there, if you pass arguments to that.
I ain't get that token, you just keep on... I ain't get that, I don't see this, but... We're gonna worry this guy to here, we have time, and I'm gonna do it in a minute.
I, I saw it, but there was one in here, and I'm not sure. There is none, I think, it isn't all of them. And is, is it reflecting on these poor base?
Yes.
And, okay, that's why I went from ten to six.
Yeah, so far, we're under, and we are, I think, about town, confused, and I just tried yesterday, because really, I don't have a budget to investigate. And... Because I don't know how many hours the boys can have in the war, or certain department, till the end of September. So I have to just kind of pull back and pick up some figures that kind of reflect a great number of hours, which part can go in there, cause, but I know my dentists do. And in the new budget, I'm gonna have dentists go down, the rest, so I can see if we pay for an operator, but how much for pain, or expert quality, I'll write that down. And, uh, that's how, this time, to go ahead, and I just have operator, operator ranges. I, that means all the people working there in the water, and I also done that for the sewer. I always kind of put it together, because that's the way we have to set up, and I do, but I don't write that down.
That's a good, really. It helps me to see it, working on, you know, that's a little bit more, possible, a little bit more work.
Well, no, I already got it in the line, and I can write that down. It's just that this is the way it's set up last year, and so, instead of having to answer all of this, I'm just working forward, across that, because I have to get one.
When we get ready to work on it, and I said this is, I don't know what the number four, but when we get ready to work on the budget for next year, and we have, um, a historical depth of, uh... Like, two years, so we can kind of see a trend of how things are going, is that, does that, you know...
I think I could work on some of that address. Because that would, that would help to know where, you know... But really, truthfully though, your last year, the year we're in now, is probably your most historic one in the past, cause every year, costs go up. It would be naive to say that 2011, we could kind of judge from that, can't. And really, truthfully, we haven't given any of the volumes here raised for years, so we can't say that... So we want to keep that. In insurance, we know we're having an insurance seminar next week. You might find out then with the insurance rates, you're gonna be, you're not, we know they're gonna go up. We know all the insurance is gonna go up. There's not anybody that's wanting to go up. So, if you can't really go back to me, I think it's, uh... It's more advantageous to reflect what it will, not what it was, but I can, I can show you some of the parts. Because now, with the sewer, there's no need to look at what its sewer expenses were two years ago, because we run that new, new leave thing, and there's gonna be all, we added expenses to that. Same way with the water. We can't go back and look at what it cost, we run that water plant over here, that old water plant years ago, because now, we're buying water, which is an added expense, we're gonna be going there, which is gonna be... Which you can look at. Place to bargain is, I told you, a part of the other changes, except for, like, gas goes up, and maybe water stations goes up. That's always far as $1,000, if you do it. This year, it's gonna be higher, but this year, we got it up to 60,000. That's because we bought a car, that was $13,000. But normally, for a small thousand, 48,000, $1,000, a lot, right? Part, part, we don't need it. We don't have money for any of that, any of our expenses. We have money for five, and then you look, and there's nothing like that. All we do is need our expenses over here.
Well, there's some places that we can cut back, for instance, in on the power. Well, the coal allowance, too, you could...
Well, but you gotta remember that the coal allowance is, was given to Mark years ago, when he didn't get a raise. That's how, that's why you got coal allowance, because you can get a raise in salary. So, if you're, you take this coal allowance away, then it's taking, it's taking its pay, check away, because that's, yeah. You know, it's like, on the first, it's down to $10, and then an hour, and then you say, well, I'm sorry, but you can only get nine now.
No, I didn't say to see it that way, but I couldn't...
I mean, I was looking for it. Because we can pay, I do, you know, the police, doesn't decide, and we just pay them, which comes a lot more people. Well, but a lot of people, they know, it's about, too, because it's out, they want this down, they want this protection. And when we tried, it was low, which was, I know, 15 years ago, to, uh... Work with the sheriff's department, it was like $75,000, and we didn't even deal with my allowances. They had a hard officer for us, to buy the car, but we paid for all our insurance, everything. It was higher than what we brought here.
Don't, don't we already pay for services, some services, to make the longer taxes that we pay, and being in county?
We do, but the sheriff's cars, all of the government account, and they're having a lot here at this bank, how soon are they gonna get there?
Are you saying we don't need a sheriff's department, a police department?
No, I'm just saying this is one of those...
Are you saying we're waiting?
Possibly.
Yeah, they may stand well for some of the money. But we have all the benefits to it, all the benefits.
I know, whenever you didn't make almost $10,000, I know that.
And self-insurance, yeah, it comes back a lot, but they don't get much profit for that. They have a lot of difficulties, I don't know whether it is the part of the, because if you're hot, you don't go. They pay a lot out of the pot. Really, truthfully, part of the only reason they have self-insurance is because that's probably guilty.
I'm not gonna reach out for that.
Yeah. Well, we have to talk about the budget next time.
Yeah.
This time here, it don't mean anything, it's already set, so, but next time.
Well, we have enough attorney to, we'll talk to the department, schedule, hold it.
Absolutely. I ask the member here, determine if anything they need before we set down.
Okay.
And we have that, and that's fine, too. While, while working on it. I'm like, why, if he's coming to our streets, he needs to know the impacts, so, bunch of... Then they're, what happened? It's happened, that way.
You get my damn one?
That's actually, oh, that's...
Keep trying.
Well...
This is honestly, can I, can I ask about any of these things here, or maybe can we discuss anything on the business?
You know, by being, but...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
If they wanna hear, if they don't want to, then they live on.
Oh, I'm sure they, they won't, unless they know something I don't know, I mean, um... The building inspector, what, what happened with that? What, I'm gonna talk about the building inspector. He was on...
He was active, he died.
To St. James, or...
No. I don't know, I don't even get a thing yet, I don't know if he died.
Oh, I thought he was from St. James.
He died, uh... For a few reasons, but mostly because he was... Look at that, but David doesn't need it, too. He had a dream that if we get somebody, he will have training, and they're from... Until he wants some pay, or if he down here doing inspection, but we won't pay two people, we'll pay him to get somebody trained, and they have their own, and one of the things is pay. See, two people did it voluntarily to do it. One of the things gets paid, and one of the things... But between the two of them, I don't know how to do it already.
What kind of, what kind of qualifications do they have?
There is no qualifications.
No qualifications?
They got a handbook, they gotta read, there is no 100% test, 100% class. They got a handbook to go by, most of them have done it. Of course, I know, uh, the other don't have no certificate of any kind. He does it for his family, there's often require, and like, to be, uh, inspected.
So they just come in and tell you your house, and...
No, he gotta go by a guideline, set up by the state of there, in the building, too.
Yeah, but, so there's...
They got a guideline, that can't just...
So anybody, anybody to do it?
Anybody to think they're qualified to do it.
You don't have to worry about it, I don't have electricity in your building.
Right, if you think that he don't need to know any of that, then you wanna warn him, he can.
I didn't say I didn't give him...
But you, I'm just telling you, you could hire a moor around if you want to. But once the time, you'll look at people, qualifications, been around it, that's been on inspection, there's two people that can do it. I'll tell you that, Mark Becken and that. They've been working with Jimmy all along, Mark's been working with every inspector we have. They know, they know that handbook, they know that thing. They willing to work every day. Between one and two, they should be available all the time. Right now, we don't have one on Thursdays and Fridays, we don't have any, he done his job. But if we point them, and they got a problem, and they want to call him down here, and they get on their feet, he willing to come down and work there. But now, both don't have to agree with that. That took his father to do it. And that can't get paid because she don't stop it, electric stop. And Mark, he can go, but see, that we would pay him for each point, each point, and he'd be like a side guy.
Can I ask a question of a net?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do the building inspector job, knowing you're not gonna get paid for it?
She get 6% of what we cut.
I know that, but...
She didn't want to have to see it, I talked to her, I talked to her on that one.
I'm fine with it. That's how I wanted to know.
And do you allow these sheriffs or shoot of us, that way he's unavailable, unavailable? Sometimes with people, like, none, that I...
Right, right.
Even one of them.
Must spend doing paperwork, anyway.
They won't call, uh, anyone.
I don't get paid. Have I been paying for it, anyway? You always have, right? So, uh...
She does follow up inspection sometimes. Once that Jimmy done rode his death, I don't, she got to go see why he go live, he done. And Mark has been involved in all those various inspections he made.
But what, I don't know, Mark knows, you understand, right? Mark, he was part of the main...
You know, he thought about electric. All you can do is look at plug in, make sure that the right time, right place. You don't see water. You can look at a box and make sure it properly placed, properly placed on it. But the wire in the house, you don't inspect that. You can't see behind the wall. You can't look, you can expect, mostly it goes to your plug in, make sure the right amount of plug in, or certain places. It's all written out there. Almost anybody with any other legislation could do it, they wanted to, and trained to. Look, or if the glass fell out, you can go to the book on, everywhere. And, but you don't have to be an electrical genius to be inspector, to make sure a house has got a sound. If they've got quality wire behind the wall, they're just, you can meet that from there. And ain't nobody else who's not carrying water. The handbook of the state of church.
So we, we, this, I mean, the first time I even heard we needed one was when I got this paper, and it was something, we got two others, and... And, and away, maybe check for somebody else's money? You going to do that?
Well, if you got somebody, mine, don't be named out there. I don't know, guys, I'm going to do names out there, that volunteered to do it, that knows what they're doing, been involved. I don't mean, you guys gotta do it, if you, if you got a name you want to go out with, go it, if the board want it, that's it. I'm just saying, if two people volunteered to do it, and I think they have the qualifications to do it.
The young ones are definitely the top, because...
I can't have a call Jimmy regardless, if not my call Jimmy regardless. If not my call, you don't talk to me till tomorrow. You talk about my house, you don't talk past me, anyway, I said, hey, Jerry, hey. You have asked me a question. Why should I tell you, tell me, if you don't talk to me?
I didn't know what they was to ask, I didn't...
Hey, all you gotta do, anything go wrong. I'm trying to say, I haven't seen a heart in my heart in this month. I missed it, too.
I haven't seen it.
I don't even know what thing I got to, you were down here, oh, I found here, but I mean, it's no secret.
I came to get what I was told to get, that's all.
I'm just saying, I'm not gonna argue no more about it. There are two names that I throwed out there. If the board want them, fine, if they don't, get somebody else. I ain't gonna find one. Because that, and that, and both of them, I keep going out there, where you do it. That's what things like jobs, because them people, they gonna listen to all the crap, all the tools. Next time, they go down to the test one, you got these some assholes in here, they won't fix the hogs, and they ran them out these people, and they got what they don't, they can't move them. Yes, yes, I don't know why his warning was wanted, but their dedication to the city is the only thing I can figure out. So, it's a thankless job, and it, that's your right here. And her case, nothing, 6%. 27,000, 2, uh... 2,000. You know, she gets a dollar, makes it into a... But some people are there to be, so you know they don't hurt them.
A dollar and a half, then second half. I'm here, anyway.
You know, I think...
I don't like force.
What force?
I don't know what he has to, you know, he's already pulled that business.
Why not? Why didn't you call? Then we available, we got people available all the time. Well, I mean, but don't go there.
I'm not doing it all the time. Mark would do it the majority of the time. Just like when Jimmy did it, instead of paying him, to come back, drive all the way down here, for just to go check for a GFCI, I would go do that. And that's what opportunity is, Mark would be the main. He already has a full-time job, and it shouldn't be taking his time, it should be, that should be what he's doing. So, why does he have...
He got his radio, he got his phone, he made a call, he'd go to it, he would drop that and go to it.
They just don't do it, I got a problem, I don't know.
You're not even...
Well, we're not about time here, so... You're not like, four hours, not like, I... You had four hours last year. Yeah, in four months, you had four hours. It's not taking that much of his time.
Say that again, four months, four hours?
Yeah.
There's not that many inspectors, I mean, it's not...
So then, what's the problem?
I don't know, I'm not over, I...
That's a hour a month.
I wasn't over.
And I, I, I always try to schedule. If I get two open a week, I try to do them.
I do, yeah, yeah, they don't...
And that's, that's scheduling. That's one thing her, you know, carry... Any more questions?
Yeah, I, I do, I'll come later.
Uh?
I'll come later, even why, why you said...
Your stores, we got problems, they're good, I'm trying, it's running over, it's forcing stuff out, coming down the road, you can walk out, running over, getting loose, I'll call down, need to be replaced. It's all, it's getting across the front. Shouldn't be replacing here.
They shouldn't, they have to replace them with a roof line?
Well, we put the roof on, and he was craving any. We tried to get him to do that.
There are a lot of different areas, which we still are, but I guess that, that's deteriorating to that, meaning, maybe...
It sure been changed, then, though. But, the most time, the people put, all the people put roof on, they don't put the other on. I don't know if they did or not.
Oh, if you just don't try to be a W, uh...
And, and... Being, uh, I've used them both in my presence since my house. Who's... If it ain't saying that you don't want...
Maybe you like to ask me.
Who's... I... Timmy like to talk to the shooter, I'm not sure. I would always say to Dean, I, I like Dean, I got no problem with him, if he got it, he does do ventilation for years and years, but it's really no kick to do it, that part.
You might see him last Friday.
Oh, yes, that's why I have to be careful.
Timmy got a, had a problem with seven days, tax rate holiday, I said.
All right, then, you can get out.
Yeah, we have to do the tax rate, that's what we done this month, we all have papers back, the state, uh, I must, I must, I believe, the last one's in the month.
I have thirty three in the month.
I'm not, it's wrong. I mean, that's my suggestion, and we know that greats, some people always come to the bottom, because that says that, so, yeah. They did it on the...
People don't do that, it was always between now and then, I have a meeting...
We have to have another meeting for the, uh, budget.
We could schedule a session, my brother, we could, we actually have a meeting, add that.
This is a newspaper, that will have a tax rate, that's why we have a set date tonight.
So if we can have, get the tax here, and you go home.
But I can just have the green, you have to have anything else.
Or we could schedule a meeting at night, if we got that going, have a tax there, prior to. And we could have a budget. We, we could have a tax there, and then work session on that budget. Get our work in one day. And we may sometime this month, when stuff come up, I'd have a board meeting, since we got to do that. Well, we got plenty of time to schedule that, it's something that we do. And right now, we tend to agree on having a tax there and a work session.
How long we gotta say, budget, last?
Then, how many questions you wanna have?
It's all, it's for the public, it's what it is, the budget's...
The tax here, no, the budget, the budget, the work session, that's not, the public can meet it, but, you know, that, that's here for the church. But the tax, you know, the public, that's what they're here for. But in the same, like to, the tax rate. Well, if you're going, what's all the... One percent?
Gets nine, there's nine, eight, or six, I think, last year, the ballot, or, says that, we wish to have that, so, we, uh...
But the, the ballot comes out the thing, you can't raise, if you're, rate goes up or down, then you gotta raise the rate, by law, the ballot's here. But you can't raise the rate and make your income more...
Well, you can't make it from the ballot, because that's what the city, people voting on, which is...
Well, just by the...
That's stealing, it's about, that's what's what they issue.
It, it didn't what it did, but you thought, if you had a tax there.
And that's just telling them, this is what it's gonna, what it's gonna be, or they, they ask questions, they pick ask question.
And all the question. Long as it's paying to... And our thing, we hit by law, we gotta do it, that's it.
But we have to put the policy, the budget next to it, so we can have it, so... Well, I think is we're gonna have a tax hearing, we should only do that, you know, don't have a meeting, just say not.
Most tax hearings that I've had, every year, and we've had them prior to meetings, and, uh, about, you sit here about three minutes, nobody got a question, it's told me, uh, we usually do it prior to, but we gotta do it this month. If we done it tonight, we would've done it before the meeting, and I've never had a question asked, maybe one or two, because, because we made it, get what the rule of the law will let. And all we thought that the change in the evaluation, we had to raise...
And the newspaper, or the state, and it tells you, but, but she can make, we can have that. Do you tell the people, have this tax, the tax hearing, you say, this is, this tax hearing, this is, this is what the tax is going to be, and explain it so that they understand that... We always put it in newspaper, put everything in the newspaper, show what the tax assessment is, and why the tax rates are...
What's it up there?
That's the same thing, we'll do that, too, because then you have to ask an audience to accept it, because all of the, the, a couple times that I've gone to the tax hearing, I've just heard, do you have any questions? No questions, close meeting, no, I don't recall hearing, this is what the tax rate's gonna be, this is where it's gonna be effective, you know, it's gonna... Well, we will have art, but see, like that there, there's always an artist, that, that, and it shows you, tells you, the artist's, your tax assessment, well, we're not gonna tell people what we're using in art, because we haven't got it yet, yeah, why can't you tell me my own painting? You just gotta tell them what this assessment is, and what the ratings, so it's more of just a formality that we have, yeah, it's never matter. And people get to ask questions, that's... Have we said?
Any help?
Have we said the date?
Uh, yeah, the twenty ninth of, uh, August.
Okay.
Thirty, uh, what month?
Well, it's, uh, six, uh, back to August.
Thirty. Now, we get going to do, get the tax there, and we're gonna have a work session, too. Oh, we're gonna do that, we shouldn't limit that there, and after five thirty, and then, and then we're going to the work session, and you know, after.
And why must we do that?
We said the tax there, and after five thirty, probably within twenty minutes, we're getting a work there, and it goes, I am, that's, that's right.
Okay.
When that, after going to, uh, work, you know...
Will we be, will we be talking to the, the, the various, uh, private parties, various parties, maybe, you don't, you don't bring them in to discuss... Well, I'll, I'll present to you what I think the city can afford, just the basic stuff, and in between that, I will have talking part, and, you know, various ones, about their budget, if they're asking for anything anymore, until they give it to me, just tell me what they want, and then, like... And then, if you didn't work it in, you got a new funding part, you put it in.
Won't that don't ask, we're not gonna, no, we ain't gonna...
Yeah, they don't, they just wait for something, like, much longer, uh, uh, the private chief needs some helps, well, that she don't say, no, we have to do it, because we have funds where we can take out of, you have a fun thing, that means you gotta have helps, and the things that you have to have, but, they probably want to have new funds, and then only came forward that were down for...
But things like that is, you weigh on grants, okay, and then we have to amend our budget to make some...
Well, I guess budget, look at that one for this year, I didn't have, uh, here, but they went for a ramp, in the private party, so I had a ramp, so I could take that ramp. Go to the private party, decide, see what I'm dropping out, and say the change.
And I think Charlie's got a little bit before, we need to count two before we get out there. Not just, we need to start that night, if it's okay, we need to get here, Charlie's...
And ready the session, ready what session we need to carry forward?
Uh, he can give a, a summary of what's going on, and what, what they go on, and the others. But if the other stuff, we can talk about this, and then, then we'll have a talk.
So we're moving into the tax session, five thirty, five thirty?
Five thirty, the tax there, and then, work session immediately after the tax. When it could be any, when nobody has any questions, it could be five minutes, that's right, or ten, or thirty, or, uh... We can schedule it at five thirty, six thirty, one minute, I mean... And Charlie's gonna explain what you're gonna be asking for, drawdown.
The first part I have, is I promised you last month, that I'd get you the budget, because we got to store it, so I had to create, right, the three, right, so we wanna get the store from RD, and did it. Uh, I'm gonna have a change order number one, with Herzog sent to you, that drops the contract amount down to three thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents. That all their work together came down, and all these payments, so the guidance, and that's your approved change of work you did. The budget, with everything I have on it, that Joe Anderson supplied me from the very beginning, with your reversions and stuff, such, we have money left over, in the amount of about twenty-four thousand dollars. With RD's reduced budget, uh, if you remember back when we finished this, they took some money away from us, we had five hundred and two thousand obligated, they cut it back to three sixty-eight, or four sixty-eight, eight hundred, because they only allowed five cent attendance. They had told us at that time, that money would still be available to the, and the project they recruited, but then they have not done that, they got rid of it, we don't have it any further. But we do have twenty-four thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents left, to do this up. And surprisingly enough, the budget that I have on that, is twenty-two thousand, some odd dollars for construction, twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for construction, and I'm gonna request two thousand dollars for engineering services, to do the design and bidding of those items, and buy an engineering deal. That will put us right at twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. If the bid's still in like I think it will, and we wanna do all the items, including lab equipment, repair those four lights outside for security purposes, and the control panel on the lift station, we can't put two dollars into that, that RD will not have any further. In case, and then before, Joe Anderson, we could possibly buy the lab equipment ourselves, so we had to, we're planning that counterpart, but this way, we're gonna be ninety percent, and ninety-five percent of the life could be paid for. That allowed them to do the test on the ECO line, everything, so we can...
Charlie, can you do a lot of the tests, that, that, can you do all the tests, and how...
This is, uh, the viewing for the ECO line, and the, uh, portal meter for VO and pneumonia, that they do, do down, that's a vet and certified commodity, that the MR will check on, such it is happy, that's all the equipment that we're putting into this. And then, in addition to that, there is a drawdown request, for forty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars, to pay Herzog, and pay us our inspection, uh, engineering fees for the life. And I'll have a copy of this, if you on that, to show you right now.
So we have a copy of this, or you talk about it, or is it...
I can estimate, uh, the docs, I did not have, but I, I'll need a copy, we did put meetings, ours, we did put meetings, ours, I'm gonna go through several things, you know, for, for makeups, you know.
Any help? You don't want to take a break, just, just...
I'm ready to be considered by the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good call.
All the passes?
Here.
All the branch, there, all the tier, all the cement, here.
First one, did you get it?
I seconded.
Move the main day on, baby?
Aye.
Both?
May, can we take it off, both sessions, make it on? Can I take them off?
Move them both in.
So, I, I'm here, okay, because I, I have a couple things I just put right there, that I have to...
Containing agenda? Move the main day on, baby?
Aye.
Both? Okay, you been flattering, man.
Mayor, I have a, a couple items here, the first one's a drawdown request, for the UV dissection system, uh, you should have a copy of the first sheet, that shows certified construction, a payment of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty cents, and engineering fees of eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Your total drawdown request to RD is forty-four thousand, five hundred forty-nine thirty-five.
You want to go, you want to, time, I've been, I've been, Martin, I'm, we have movement to accept that drawdown?
I'd like to go to the, to the drawdown.
I seconded.
Move the main day on, baby?
Aye.
Second item I have is a change order for Herzog, it's a total deduct of three thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents. We have a deduct of a little bit less, uh, six inch VIP, and, and the substitution, they're using four inch PVC in the basins, instead of VIP, which is scheduled eighty-five inches, probably acceptable. Uh, and then, an add of the doorwork that I approached about last month, uh, painting the office with ditch equipment, and replaced two rover disconnects that found to be faulty, when they were replacing the rovers. Uh, the overall add is twenty-three fifty-seven forty, the overall deduct is fifty-nine twenty-five, for a total change of thirty-five sixty-seven sixty.
Move the, the fifth drawdown? I get it.
It's change order.
It's a change order. It is a change order, and...
Change order, I agree on.
I seconded.
Move the main day on, baby?
Aye.
Both?
Uh, the next item I have is, uh, you showed a copy of all this, and then, number three, the engineering rooms, for us to do the design and bidding phase of the three items that we have, but, um, there'd be on the lift station control panel, the security lights, and the lab equipment for new testing, that's required by DNR, and the written house, to say cost of travel, uh, it's a lump sum increase of two thousand dollars. It does fit with your budget, that, real, real closely, so we have an estimate of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for all that equipment we purchased, we have money in the budget, we have a deficit right now, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and some dollars remaining. Twenty-four three nineteen twenty-two, so if you have anything, you will have to spend it, two dollars out of your own pockets, if that will be, once we get the digital value of that, and go over it.
We have the change order, right?
This is an amendment to our engineering room.
I'd like to go to you.
Change order.
Change order.
Go right now, will you? Can I second?
I seconded. Aye.
Both?
Are we going on the agenda, or is that a...
Yes, get in on that.
What are, what are we test?
That's all I, I have, Mayor, I'll ask you a question on that part.
I don't know, I, I would want to ask you.
Oh, it's hoping that, it'll be done here real sharp.
And the thing I talked to you about that day, for, for the town, was, 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 they had a problem, they were weird. Okay, be careful, I don't matter.
Do you want me to stay and talk about the, what coordination?
You can, huh?
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so that's next on the agenda, is it?
Yep.
Okay, something Charlie, I know, and whole hell about he don't got it. But you can, uh, present what you know, and I'll, and then what I've done, like, on projects, for a favor.
Well, over a year ago, a year and a half ago, you were cited by DNR, that coronation of people in your system do the bad samples we had. We had made a proposal with them, do written reports, to put coronation in standby, and that's all we wanted to do. DNR came back and said, no, we want you to serve everybody in town, even the forty... who's along Cemetery Road, so you have to run new distribution line here, out, two temple, one back end. Through negotiations with the mayor and the city, we did a line, a two-inch line to run Cemetery Road to serve those folks. And the cost was extremely high. We were looking at a sixty thousand dollar project because of that line construction, coordination, government, and everything. The mayor wrote a letter to DNR requesting that you be given some kind of relief on this or some money. We caused the expense, it's leaving the city not only to install it up front, but then for the operation cost. My understanding is, from talking to the mayor, DNR came down after that letter was written, did a review of the site, and they have now agreed we don't have to put the two-inch line out to serve those people, they can be served off in district water. So all we have to put in is the coordination equipment at the standby site, and it's set up for a perfect bridge to tap it. Control valve, every time that control valve opens, it injects chlorine, so water should admit, it'll fill both tanks in the street across town at the same time, it will not be in the system, go out of Florida system, except for those first four units that you have on Cemetery Road. And if their water is good, come from them, they're the question. Typically, what has happened in the past, we give a slot of water from them, but it's captured in our tank, we can't get rid of it. They flush their lines and it's gone, so their water's clear again. But we can't get rid of that good heat, because we've got three hundred thousand gallons of water shut in those same tanks. This will solve that problem. I think DNR's in agreement with that. We're reducing the cost significantly, down to the point where we have close enough money to do it with just a grant from the county and the city.
So they don't have any problem, that's those four homes, they have a problem, like we got the rest of the town?
No, essentially, if the county gives us a little bit of water, if they flush it quickly, comes on through, their water's back clear. So even though they may get a little bit of it, it's not a dangerous binding water, it's a small number coal farm, like one part per million, that DNR testing allows zero. If you don't need zero coal farm in your water, you've got a bad test. So they don't worry about anything else. And whatever might be out there in that is very, probably, very, very small, and now the coal farms coming in, that is, is bad for us, wants to do it.
But only if, if they run into problems then, when it's later, then they have to, they have to, they have plenty, so if they start running problems.
But DNR gets their way eventually. Every public water system is taken through, that's their goal. And if, it should happen.
They then have to.
It should happen. Four months, not a bad time, did the call to check it out.
It's unfortunate that our world we live in is, you know, is not pure water, so.
And we go forward into the financing of it, we cut corners, did everything, cut down, and we come up two thousand dollars short of being able to recover. Thank God we have a chamber of comment here, so they have the reason to donate, grant, money, whatever, free, no payback, to do the project, we just come up, make it five thousand dollars. But we don't have the money to cover without looking at rate increase and everything. With DNR changing that, it changes dramatically. I mean, it cut more, forty some thou, thirty some thousand out there, going back out there with written.
Yeah, more than twenty thousand dollars.
So, with what we got on hand, and it's fresh, and I mean, we hope we don't have to make a connection, but we can operate without raising rates. So we ordered a new building and everything for the fact that we discussed over time, which we was going to have to get a long time ago to get. We took heads on it back then, the county was getting filled. But we should be, and I thought them, we would attempt, to have a thirty to forty-five day gap, but we're not in thin stone, and it is awful. But I would say that they're late too much, but I think, if the building comes, it won't take long, we start, we begin, we're going to lay a quarter panel in the building, put the lines in, and we got all that fixed.
The N S has got the meeting.
We got everything, we can do most of that, we probably have the time they were done, I don't know, I don't know what we want to do with them, we probably have that done.
Maybe get a couple conduits in, so like, it's too much.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, I know that people are coming in force, but I want to make sure conduits are here. But everything down in the BM line, I told me try that forty-five, they wanted to lie, but we're in DVO, but we're extended down, and we're not DVO, and that's why we got tickets.
I, one of us, in yours, I'm going, I'm going to report, there's a couple things that we have, the storage, I think, now Mr. Bulby discussed it a little bit, that we have lost storage, it could be a problem with coordination, it was changed storage, was that something you were addressing, Mr. Bulby? You're just, okay. And are you, are you really the inspection plan that has to be done this year?
Yes.
You are doing that, you have that scheduled?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And that'll be full stand highs?
Yes. Now, on the first part of the report, the N S one gives, the problem being our fault is without coordination, because it might be too much for, with coordination, there's no question, they were worried about possibly they turn over. Because we had designed this whole system for seventy-five thousand dollars a day usage, we have less than twenty-five. With all the leaks fixed and all the problems we had in system revision, they're just not there now, and the sales are not there, so, but they'll be finding coordination.
But people, certainly not they are, and I think you have to be happy.
Sure.
Plan so much for the city on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay.
I can take picture.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, you out it on that.
Thanks, Charlie.
We agreed this, the chamber agreed to take it, it's early, you know, we read the time. Now, of course, we, you, you, time is going to bring the take over, getting the sign changed, they're going to need a model, they're good, kind of like, it's going, I think it's going to save anybody, that they're always.
I took pictures of who's going to take that out to them, and then the addition we're going to have, down by the mailboxes, chambers that pay for, let's say, St. Mary's Heights, Chamber of Commerce project, just on that big board across the top, with our Christmas sign, so, I don't know whether it's.
The other sign for me is that, that it won't be like the one on there, we can't get these people to get it, to do it, and nobody wants to take it on. Now, we, when we had a chamber meeting the other day, which is something same with members, I don't think we have any members here, uh, when they gave us the grant, they also said, if the economy, although there are some issues, we'll take care of that, right?
Right.
So if they don't anticipate doing it this last, then it comes back and do our, but it would be more or less like our place sign now, if it, it's agreed the same way as it's now, if that works.
The one that says that you're not leading?
No, it's that welcome, it's pretty, whatever it says, I don't think we have one leading.
Yeah.
Oh, because you have government.
That, that, no, that, that.
It was on the backside, backside.
Maybe I don't lead that.
Was it on the backside on the other one?
You know, I did not know that.
I did not, did I?
You did that on the back, I guess. I did not know.
I didn't hear all you said about the sign about St. Mary's Heights, and putting the sign.
When that, when that board across where the mailboxes are, it's just going to say St. Mary's Heights, and that's what the subdivision is, it'll just be on there, smaller letters, Chamber of Commerce project.
Oh, okay.
And the other thing we voted on was, is each year we donate so much for all, and we will continue this year also.
But we need to, in the chamber, that's like, hey, nobody, thank you, you know, for what they've done for us, but that's five thousand, may not sound like much, because that, that's the difference between having, so, so DNR, if we went lower, we've been, they give us enough to keep us in, so, yeah. And we're going to come back down over, we can build again, but right now, we're, yeah, find somebody else to talk about it, but the water project should be, that's history in the next couple months. Yeah, we do need approvals to change that sign, so, we can't get it, go in and work for this for here, and nobody's going to exact the rest of the time. These are going to be down here, where they reckon, so we need the board to approve the change.
I make a motion that we approve the change of the sign.
Want to make a day on there?
Aye.
Both? No more questions, go on, move on. Now, with the number back to what we was working on, work section, discussing building, and legacy of building, but, and, like I told you, down the work section, these people in there, Jimmy and his guy, but he said he would help work with, you know, get trainees, he recommended, and I didn't say it, but I forgot, that we use an in-house people, called the girl, that my boy was, that's the people we work with. I, I don't know why, in fact, said it, or what it is, but he did recommend that we use in-house. But right now, we, way it was with him, he was on Thursday, Friday, and them were people aggravated whenever money couldn't be winning, and they, you know, when you were the first time hired, or entered, or someday you get out of the street, you want to get moved in, and we didn't have any of that. Now, and then we're available on every business day. I wouldn't think we'd just get me on a weekend in, never be up to date, but I wouldn't, I don't recommend that I practice work, but I don't think them, I think anybody can make money to try. Yeah, I, I put out the name of Mark, Annette, they've offered their services, I think they're very capable of doing it, they've been helping him do it, all of them invited, Mark goes back for the night with Jake, and Annette did too, so this is what they're doing, Jake wants to do. They go work with Jake, they got, I think they can do it without, I'll say, we haven't had Jimmy die, they may have to call him or something, but I don't think they actually done, but he's available, he says he'll do that, he'll get it.
And for the record, they, that they are not going to pay compensation for that?
Mark might, Mark, he does before, he does go make this money on that, he's not on, and that can't be supposed to go like this now.
I had seen something on the, on the, the budget, which is, nine six, this year's budget, it showed building inspectors.
But every other, it's money that comes in, goes out, they pay it, whoever it owns, getting inspection paid, and we don't pay somewhere beyond what we get, and it don't even do the bill, no matter.
Well, Mr. Bulby, the hour is one two hours, and one five hours is complete, so that's why you have a fee not covered from spend.
And he only dropped four hours in, all the month, so, they, uh, and both in tech register, change or modify, don't, don't touch the debt.
I second it.
Want to make a day on there?
Aye.
Both? Do you go in? You can go, you're only seven one, you're. Yeah, he gets going to a vertical plan, stay there. Uh, ordinance combined in the municipal court fee, you got a copy of it in your hand, eight ninety-three? Need a motion for a, a third meeting? Eight ninety-three? Want to make a day, you want to second?
I second it.
On there?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Want to move to go take a reading?
I'd like to take a reading on bill number eight ninety-three.
Second?
I second it.
Want to make a day on there?
Aye.
Both? Okay, I'm moving to adopt?
I second it.
Want to make a day, roll call?
All pass it.
Right.
Aye. All the time, aye. All the step, aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, you enjoy your orders, I want to order pay off. I'm taking, ordinance number eight ninety-four, ordinance to the closing complex to enter. This man Dave, if you pass it, me and Joanne going to, no, yeah, me and Joanne going to got to fill up, like tax records, it's failing, y'all got to fill them out too. Of course, they, I don't like it. They don't change stuff, they just have to do it out of.
I'll make a motion.
I'm going to, thank you.
I second it.
Want to make a day on there? On there?
Aye.
Both? Now, 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 I need. Want to move to take a reading?
I make the motion for a second reading of bill eight ninety-four.
Second.
Want to make a day, on there?
Aye.
Both? Want to do a adopt?
I make the motion to adopt bill eight ninety-four.
Second.
Want to make a day, roll call?
All the state, aye. All the, aye, all the state, aye, all the pass it.
Okay, ordinance pay. Okay, ordinance to amend the budget for the current fiscal year, eight ninety-five.
I make the motion to read bill number eight ninety-five by five.
Second.
Want to make a day on there?
Aye.
Both? I couldn't hear, I mean, I, I had to do that, but. Want to take a reading?
I'd like to move to take a reading of bill number eight ninety-five.
I second it.
Want to make a day on there?
Aye.
Both?
I'd like to move to adopt bill number eight ninety-five.
I second it.
Want to make a day, roll call?
Aye. I, 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 I snap, aye. All the state, aye, all the pass it.
Aye.
Okay, judging from, judging from, we just kept there and worked there, and we still have the need for it, but the motion that we, as we bid on, that we did, that we're done, and what we do, that's, probably, at the next month, we, whatever, get it done, we need to get it done, and we're good about it, so, I don't think it's emergency, but I mean, it's, um, tell me to get everything done, probably. Yeah, we, cut. When you add the dot down, show a team, they're going to go all on big day. Let it get done. Okay, I'm just hoping to, uh, add that first, add that to this, before you go, and then you're cutting down, probably, and it's. Okay, I'm just hoping to, uh, at first, add back the list, before you go into front and downtown, in the front, quick. Actually, it's coming, that, you know, they're gonna be out front.
I'll make a motion, and that's worth, it is, or getting this.
I say?
I second.
On there?
Aye.
Both? All right, and set the dates for that there, and we agreed during the work session, it'd be twenty-nine, and all intended to read to us. It'd be at five-thirty in the afternoon, and then we're going to a work session immediately after the doctor. And in fact, they will be. And we're moving to the clock now, I think.
Lord, pardon, pardon, Ed, I'm not, uh, personally, I brought it up, it's on the carburetor, on the yellow pedal, okay, seventy-five hundred money. Uh, we have rebuilt, uh, about eight months ago or so, and we had problems with it again a couple months ago, and we went through it again, and we're having problems with it again, and that's probably to the mechanic, he said, I want it, everything we can do now is replace the carburetor, he said something about the, howling is warped, or something like that, and it's not easy to do.
That probably be a budget buster.
Pardon?
That probably be a budget buster.
I think, I can't remember, what did he say, between five and six hundred dollars?
You're gonna be hot, that's what the governor, I'm gonna ask.
Yeah, it's got to go, that's one basis unit, rush hour.
Well, function, that's other, you know, you take that dude, man.
And then, under that, we have three calls for it, and we call it out for a structure fire, it'll be an electrical fire, vehicle accident, brush fire, and that's all I have.
You have a question? Um, you were about to, uh, flush it in July, did you say you were gonna be about to flush it in July?
Yeah, we done flushed it out.
And you flushed?
We've been flushing all the hydrants out of the outlet, but, yeah, we, we get, uh, hot, or gallons per minute, stuff for ISO ratings, this, so, you know, like, check on us, and we got a deep rate, so, what they're, what the hydra needs, wants put in there.
Are all the hydrants that are supposed to be functioning, are they not functioning?
Are they functioning?
Are, are all the hydrants that are supposed to, are there any hydrants that you made, or are they all functioning as they're supposed to?
All of them's functioning.
All of them's functioning, okay, do you have?
We had, we had, I need to test, you know, we need to test the field hydrant, we just tested the regular hydrants.
Field hydrants, or, I guess you guys, um, flush hydrants, we need to, no testing on those. Okay, and do you have the ISO rating, because I know that this, this is crazy, I'm sorry, okay. Um, do you, do you have the ISO ratings yet, on, on the divan, that affects?
Uh, they usually, they'll end up saying the survey, and it's something, when you add, or they'll come down here, and, uh, you probably get pretty close to being due for them to show up, and they'll go through all, on record, hydrant, and what do you have to do that? Test the hydrants against the leak, so you probably put in there.
Okay, you do that periodically, I guess, but?
Happens first, I'm, yeah, I see, something, I guess, it could be after, but, you know, it should be, you percent.
So, we, I'm not sure where we are with the classification, and I have a, um, that's all right, I, I started hearing you, you too.
Okay.
Um, so, you, you really don't have any information on, uh, public key, um, you know our, you touched it out, already, you know where I, I, I saw that in the last?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm asking, I'm sorry, I guess I was making plans.
It's the sixth right now.
It's the sixth, is there anything, can we depend on your staff?
Actually, the last time we come down, went down, we're going to make, actually, we are better, you know, and, we have, like, we didn't have tanker, we have tanker now, that they help us, but, and we got equipment that's getting real old, so that's gonna hurt us, so, you know, they come down, they got this, they go through the check. They do the, I don't know, I don't know, they do the, but we're at six right now, which is pretty decent.
All right, thanks, I have a lot of questions, but I want to go off to you tonight.
You can have, you can, I also like the fire.
There? You turn?
Yes, sir.
Please, pardon?
Nothing to report.
I think not.
I'm intimidated.
I have nothing to report.
Tree, if we ever get called up on a week, I mean, a morning, weekend, or Thursday, we're gonna try to put down the, 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 if we get called up, if we can do it before they load the plant down. It's talking, you come around a morning, it starts to catch up, and I would think it's a little bit of something else, some more jealous for also, or it's bad weather, and right back before we do that. But, it's still on that end though. But I actually tried before to do that, because he adjusted the mid ground, I just bring the name, well, you do my, the watering through, okay? Nothing to report. Okay, they did water through them, and they did me again, so that report been quick, like, we, we forgot to do it, I'm, 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 but, uh, do you got anything to report?
Yes, uh, as Charlie is, oh.
You don't have to add it.
As Charlie reported, you guys, uh, changed order to the door, the door has been installed, it's locked. Uh, we ran a test on the U V, because U V's up and running, we sent a test to the lab, the lab, uh, come back with, uh, less than two E. coli colonies per, per minute, so, it's the cleanest you can get it. And there, there's no question about D N R, it was just aesthetic, but, anyway, I just thought I'd let you know. Uh, we did get another M C L violation for this month, so, we'll pass enough papers again, so. Uh, we started to haul sludge today, but the wheelman's truck messed up, so we only got two loads out, so we'll be back tomorrow to finish up. Uh, we got the gearbox, uh, oil changed on both, both loaders, checked for metal, there was no metal shavings in the wall, so, that's orderly shape there too. Uh, the sludge pump, we thought we was gonna have to move it over to the center in order to dump the sludge, but it is working properly, so we don't have to move it, it can stay on station, we don't have to move anything, it works fine. We, we used it today, and it just, it was worth about four, five minutes, truck was out here, so, it's good, it's doing real good. For that distance, we're, we're asking it to haul against seventy-five feet a bit, so, it was good, it was really doing good, happy with that. Uh, other than that, it was just service calls, I did get bins for the bleach that we're gonna have to use for the fire, and I turned them in, so, uh, I don't know what, what the deal is, or whatever, but I guess I'll let you guys know later on, what you wanna do with that, but, uh. Basically, that's about it, uh, oh, uh, the painters are gonna be here tomorrow too, to paint the equipment, they installed, so, I'll be offhanding it. Uh, the contractor's gonna deliver a hundred gallons for the emergency generator, so that when we start it up, we can test it, because I was talking in the specification, saying, who's gonna fill up the diesel tank, uh, you know, for the generator, so. He contracted with them, they have a hundred gallons delivered to the emergency generator, so that when we do get it all hooked up, we can test it and everything, so. Everything's going on track, and, uh, I've been real happy, uh, uh, things are looking good down there, so, anybody who wants to come down, take a look at it, and see what's going on, I'll be happy to show them, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Just go back to one question, um, it may just have been, what you said, that percent bleach, is, is there, it is a special chlorine, chlorine?
No, it's five percent household bleach, five percent chlorine.
Can we go where? Where does it go, I'm sorry?
It'll be injected into the stream of the water, when, when the pump, when the altitude valve opens up to fill the, the tower, it'll be injected in the stream. When the altitude valve closes, that's all of the chlorine, it'll shut off.
So, we don't, we, we, we use household bleach?
Sure, yeah.
Chlorine, yeah.
Chlorine and chlorine, if it doesn't, fifty-five gallon drum, or gallons, we have, you're in a different percentage.
If you're in a disaster, you, you can, uh, use bleach in, uh, your own water, from, from the tap.
They had us, us do that, when we had the hurricane, you build, and you put so much bleach in per gallon.
Except for thirty minutes, and then use it.
We're not having, we're not gonna have to have a bar in here.
Scenting or not?
No, I'm sensing, definitely don't want sensing, you're a lot of that perfume, bleach, I'm sorry, dude.
Anything else? Move it on, animal control?
Um, I have to ask, uh, given, I have to ask, Officer Beckett, was there any reports or any ordinance violations in the animal area?
I don't have any of the things.
Midtown, okay.
If, if I did, it was probably passed off to the county, I don't recall any at this point.
Thank you.
Any emergency man, is that it?
Yes.
Emergency management, I, I don't have anything, and, I don't get going, and, I've been off the date, I'm willing to take, uh, Joanne, and I'm gonna go, and, and, go, here on the emergency management, so, I did want to have to take all the phone calls, everything, you make all the phone calls, you get the service all in, and, 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 I'm never approaching off. Okay, that's for, that's a petition. Make anything? You're not, okay, that's it. Oh, that's right, close station, I forgot about that, thank you, bud. Uh, we need more than one closing station, and then inside, get the, uh, get the bag, get to the special closing station, and it comes out of sunshine, and we have to make some use of section of, head of that nineteen in sunshine, off, right?
Yeah. I missed closing, we're doing the closing, uh, nineteen, ten, ten, oh.
Head of that nineteen, in, in land.
In land, first, I know.
And I second that, puts it in the, in the heart of, it's all, it's all.
You'll find out when we go in the road station. You go, you have to report, with you, and, if that gives it the right to do it. I want you, have you got one, you made it, say?
Yes.
Huh, you have a thing?
I second it.
Okay, roll call.
August Cassie.
Aye.
August, aye, August, aye, August, aye, August, aye.
Okay, hey.